...twenty twenty-one is now called to order. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. McBride, may I have the roll call, please? Mrs. Tori Dern-Franigan. Mrs. Tina Price-Genez. Mrs. Janice Kane.
President.
Mrs. Nicole Bible.
Here.
Ms. Catherine Colalala.
Here.
Mrs. Stephanie Mason. Ms. Sandra Gill.
Here.
Mr. Ezra Lo.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Arida Stewart.
Here.
Okay. This evening, we do have some people retiring that were invited to attend and two other people that will be resigning that were invited here. I don't see any of the retirees, but we did have plaques for them. Betty Smith was a teacher and student aide. She had five and a half years of service in the Alacopa School District. Janice Crumb had twenty-four years of service in the Alacopa School District. Patricia Cobb had twenty-eight years of service in the Alacopa School District. And Elaine Verostek had thirty years of service in the Alacopa School District. Also, Mrs. Engelman, this is her last meeting with us. She had six and a half years of service, so we want to thank her for her time here in Alacopa. And also, Mr. Salapek is our solicitor. He was with us for nineteen years. So, thank you, Mr. Salapek. At this time, also, we have from BBH, Mr. Dan Egan, just to give us an update on the stadium. And while he's getting ready, this is under information, but I will share with you that we did receive notice yesterday, we did receive the Community Development Block Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm sorry. Also, you know, there was a, they did not, through her placards, it was a miscommunication somewhere, but I will get her plaque. I know Tracy White had thirty years of service here in the Alacopa. Thank you, Ms. Lo, for correcting me. Tracy White did have thirty years of service also.
How many years did she say, Betty?
Six and a half. It should be on. It was.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'll try to rebrief because I'm sure you have a long night. At our last discussion, it was brought up about the potential for not only demolishing the visitor's side bleachers, which we're full on board with, but also the possibility of demolishing the home side and replacing them and looking at a synthetic turf field. And I told you I'd bring you some additional information, and that's what this is in front of you. It's the beginnings of a cost run sheet for estimating, at least our opinion of the probable cost of doing that. I gave you a guesstimate of between two and three million dollars total, just off the top of my head last time. And so, I started to actually put numbers to some of those things, just to see where we actually might land. There's a lot of things on the list that are zero items because I'm not sure whether or not we're going to need them because we just don't have a lot of information. Things like what kind of electrical work is going to really be necessary, what the limit of, if there are sewer lines that might need to be modified. If it's okay, can I go through a few things on here? Yes. So, at the top, you see the two lines in blue there. I left out of these numbers the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for visitors' grandstand renovations, so that you just saw what was remaining because I know you have a grant for that work. The second blue item there is the question about whether we should revise the field lighting or not. I really believe that if you're going through this much trouble, you're probably going to want to replace the lights at minimum. I came a little bit early tonight and took a second look at all the trees that are holding the lights up. They're very old. I kind of think that we ought to budget for actually putting just four new poles in and eliminating the eight that are there. I know they're kind of special because you don't see those kind of poles anymore, but you don't need as many. And so, it could be a little bit more efficient that way. If we relight everything with new LEDs, you're going to be running power through all eight locations. The eighth location is also stunted. It's really close to the field, and so, we have potentially a challenge if we keep that and how to distribute the light evenly. And so, it can be done. But that's an option. Further on down, I actually have a rough estimate for replacing the poles at three hundred thousand dollars. But I have a call into the Musco Company, and I'm going to find out exactly how much it would cost so we can put that on here. So, each month when I come back, we'll have a revised sheet, and you can make the decisions. You can see where you are monetarily during the design portion of the project. I know we technically haven't started any design. To be able to get to the next level, I need to be given permission by you to do that. But you needed the information tonight, I think, to be able to have discourse to decide whether or not you want to, you know, actually continue with this idea. I won't go down all the list, of course, but I've tried to calculate the amount of turf that you would potentially be putting on the field. I actually calculated it. Once the visitors' bleachers are demolished and gone, instead of putting that back to regular grass, I kind of recommend that you just fill the whole thing with turf. It gives you an extended practice area, a little bit less to keep up with from, you know, mowing the lawn within the fence line and things like that. Wherever possible, most places tend to try to do that. So, I have that. The size of turf area is larger than just a normal football field because it has that extra air in it. But again, it's your choice. Once we start looking at design plans for exactly what that field would look like, I can tell you the exact square footage difference and things like that, and we can go through those value judgments on the cost. There's a lot of things. I mentioned the zeros, site utilities and things like that, but I did estimate preliminarily without a civil engineer on board, which is I think what I'm going to be recommending you do. I did some estimating on the stormwater, calculations or activities that would be required to put the new field in. Just so everybody knows, when you put in a field, it's kind of looked at by the county as if it's pavement. Because if you think about it, the synthetic turf, it just lets water run right through. It doesn't absorb it into the earth like normal grass does. So, we have to retain some water underneath the field. We do that with stone sumps and things like that, which are also estimated here. We just recently did a field just like this, so I have a pretty good idea of how much it should cost. On the second page, you can see the summary of, this is a construction cost summary, of those items that you see there. At the top there, just above that yellow line, is a little blue marker there. It's three thousand five hundred seats. I went, then somebody had told me that they guessed it was about thirty-five hundred the last time I was here. I actually counted before the meeting. There's actually twenty-three hundred and sixty-two spaces if everyone took two foot of space on those bleachers. So, that number would come down if you rebuilt exactly the same amount of seats that you have today on the home side. So, again, that's a choice that you'll have to make.
How many do we have? I'm sorry.
You have enough room for twenty-six hundred, basically twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred.
So... Twenty-three hundred and sixty-two.
Twenty-three hundred and sixty-two.
On the home side. So, it's possible when I asked someone, gave me the number that was for both sides. So, you can see, you know, everything is units. So, if you choose to do less things, you pay less money because you purchased less units, right? So, if you decide, you know, twenty-four hundred bleacher seats instead of the thirty-five hundred that I showed there, the number goes down, of course. So, relatively, you got straightforward. Currently, right now, it's about a two million dollar construction project. I think you're probably going to be, with the lights and everything like that, about two and a half, maybe a little bit around that number for construction costs. If you go a little bit further, the next page, this is my spreadsheet. You can kind of ignore that page, but this is if we ever, if we have to do anything regarding buildings, which I don't know yet, if we have to deal with restrooms, if we have to deal with any associated structural issues in conjunction with doing the demolition and the renovation of the bleachers themselves, the grandstands. I keep a list here of things that I think are topics that you might see some of those things start to get filled in. So, it's a working document. The last page is a summary. It basically adds a little bit of general conditions for the contractors, their bonds and insurance overhead. Gets you to about two, two point two million dollars and a little bit more, again, without lights and some of those other things. And then, soft costs on top of that, survey, out-of-fee, civil engineering fees, building permits, land survey. Normally, those are about twenty percent of the cost of the construction. I think we're going to be less than, I think you can be less than that. And right now, I've got it about fourteen, a little bit more than fourteen percent. And I've added the numbers a little bit. Most everything I show you is usually a little higher than what it actually is. So, we'll keep that as the more knowledge we get through the course or if you go forward with designing it. I'll talk to the municipality, they'll figure out exactly how much the buildings are going to be. I'll put that little number on here. You'll get tight. The goal would be to get you as tight as possible to what we think the number is before you go out for bid. So, we're all on the same page the whole way through. Does that make sense? What kind of questions could I answer for you tonight?
What if we predict a tournament on campus for buildings?
If we start this summer in the design, the first thing that I would be asking you to do is, at your next meeting, approve the civil engineer to do a land survey because we have no real information, we have no drawings of the existing conditions. And also approve them to do the ENS and stormwater calculations. That design that needs to be submitted to the county is going to be really important for you, and that's also going to establish exactly what the scope of work is on the site cost. It'll be a big help to the situation. So, that is the first step. And then, I think we could be done with design early in the fall and ready to submit to the county and to the municipality for what I'm going to guess is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a three-month approval process. And the goal would be to go out for bid by November if we could do that, so we could be early on the street and get you good numbers, and then have plenty of time, plenty of time at the beginning of the year where you can start construction as soon as the weather breaks. And we would already have the contract on board. We would already have them known in shop drawings and begin to procure the materials and have those things coming rather than having to be a last-minute thing in the summer. Then they could start construction, things straight. My whole issue, and I think we talked about it a little bit last time, was trying to guarantee that you're ready to go by August. You know, you want this whole thing buttoned up and everything like that, and you helped me by making decisions early so that we can get off. Probably going to be about, you know, twenty design people involved to make this all happen with all the entities. So, there's a lot of discussions that you still have to have. We want to be able to bring you the information for that.
On the home side, where it's kind of terrible, up under there, are you going to put in the locker up under there or just going to be solid seating?
I would just do bleachers. Yeah. So, everyone's familiar with the aluminum bleacher systems. They're just standard to go to the stadiums. When you see them and they're built on a flat piece of ground, there's a lot of space underneath them. About two-thirds of your home bleachers are actually on an earthen slope. They're just concrete laid on the earth. So, your new bleachers would be just above that earth, so there really isn't going to be any space to go underneath that two-thirds. But that remaining third, where we have the serious structural issues, that will still, that will look like what you see when you go to one of these stadiums where you can see in the back of the bleachers. So, you actually have some storage space under there, but there'll be columns and structure and everything like that. And normally, we put a fence around it and a gate and try to keep folks out. But a lot of school districts restore miscellaneous paths and things like that. Sometimes they build little huts, and so you have that availability, but right now, I don't have anything, any structures built under there. I kind of think it will slow you down. I don't like them to build buildings underneath the bleachers. It's nothing but a pain in the butt for you guys later on, you know, to maintain those buildings and keep water out of them and everything like that, so. But if that, if you would like to do that, we can talk about ways to do that, of cost impacts.
What about that concession stand on the other side where the visitors are? That's going down?
That's going to go down, yeah. If you'd like to replace, make a new concession stand to replace it, or, and we can look at locations and things like that, that can also be a discussion. And that's why I save the building side of all that list of buildings because those things come up.
Can you tell me again one more time the next steps?
Yes. Next step, approve civil engineer to do the land survey and to begin the erosion and location control and stormwater preliminary design.
And you're saying we would need to vote on that at next meeting to get you moving?
Yeah, that was, I think that would be fine time-wise. I think if that's okay with you. Going beyond that, we start to compress ourselves, and all of a sudden, we run out of time for us to make the decisions together. If it's imminent that that's going to happen, I will, you know, they'll work ahead of time a little bit too, you know? Just like me, they don't always just wait until you... If that's what you guys think you're going to be doing, usually the administration can meet kids ahead of time with me, so I can start.
And the civil engineer is associated with your company?
I'm recommending that we use CEC. They're right up the road. They're pretty reasonable from a cost point of view. They're just a consultant really for you, but I can get multiple prices too, but I usually can twist their arm a little bit. This is public.
I'm sorry, the recording too.
CEC. Yeah, Civil Environmental Consultants. John Frederick, which he would lead, he would come and make presentations on those things. I think you'll appreciate him. He's a very down-to-earth person, very honest and very smart. Kind of like Mike the Structural Guy. I should, I talked to John about some of this to make sure that I was going in the right direction cost-wise. He said he thought that the land survey could be done for around five to seven thousand dollars, but I put ten thousand on the list just to be safe. He hasn't seen the site, and so, I asked, I told him to pay for the conversation today. I would be calling potentially and have him come and walk the site with us and the superintendent and look at everything and then have his answer to the price. So, it won't be ten thousand, it'll be something less than that. Very precise.
Should we, you know, agree to some of these things in here and you got the padded numbers? Will we obligated to pay the padded numbers or?
Absolutely not. My goal is to get you a good quality set of documents that we publicly bid for multiple and get you the lowest price possible, and your job is to decide the quantity and the quality, which is what I'm going to help you do. So, you'll decide the amount of synthetic turf, and you'll also decide the type of synthetic turf. I don't want to make that decision for you. I have recommendations. The coach and your athletic director are probably going to weigh in on some of those decision ones. It's a team thing, right?
Exactly.
Thank you. Go ahead.
One other point that I think everyone probably should understand is your facilities director is a very helpful person, and after the meeting last time, we had a good discussion outside in the parking lot. And one of the things that I've been stressed about is on the demolition of the bleachers, the grandstands, the concrete grandstands, trying to avoid a lot of trucking costs because, you know, take all those giant pieces of concrete onto the road and travel them somewhere, you're going to end up paying for that every mile that a truck has to go, and you'll see that in your bid. And so, we were looking for places here on site where we might potentially do that. And he believes that we can go over the hill. There's a parking lot that's kind of a student parking lot. We have plenty of acreage over there to go over the hillside. I talked to the civil engineer about that. He said it's a common thing. Department of Education though is going to make a survey that portion where we think the waste site would be. And our spoils of earth, because we're going to be digging out on the field, are going to have to be put on top of those pieces of concrete to kind of encapsulate it and keep it from creating more erosion issues. So, we're going to be looking at that kind of thing to try to find ways to save money by not, by avoiding the trucking. And that may not be the only location on site, but that was the first, most obvious one that didn't seem to bother anything that's going on currently on campus, so. You can be hearing more about that too, because I thought it was pretty clever of him to suggest that location. I didn't know you had as much acreage as you do. So, very hard.
Is that, is that seeming, can you break it down and use it again, like as you just smoothed out that area?
A lot of times when you do demolition of masonry structures, they actually separate the masonry, the thickened steel out and things like that, and they put it through a crusher.
Yeah, that's all true.
Yeah, and you can reuse it on base for road and things like that. It costs more money to do that, though. Typically, it costs more money to do that. If you have a big demolition and you have trucking that has to go many, many miles, they offset the cost of that with truck and crushing. So, a lot of times when we do the demolition structure, we actually have bidders saying, listen, my waste site is pretty far. Is it okay if I crush and process on-site so that they can reuse their cost? So, that is a possibility. So, we'll see. If we can leave it on-site, I doubt that it would pay to do the question. But if you can't really honestly find a place to put it here on-site and be comfortable, then you might see that kind of thing. It's a very good question. So, super drafty, okay? You know, from a numbers point of view, it will go up because you haven't added things to it, and so, and then some things will go down, so we'll go up and down a little bit. Talk amongst yourselves and just...
So, right now, bare minimum, we're looking at two point six million dollars to renovate the whole stadium.
That's what I think, yeah.
Thank you. This is cute, you went for the record. Mrs. Tori Dern-Franigan, Mrs. Price-Genez, and Mrs. Mason are here.
The Alacopa Board of Directors welcomes residents of the school district and commends you for attending the meeting this evening. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. At this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium. You will be asked to state your name and address. You may speak for up to three minutes. This public participation session is normally limited to about thirty minutes. Prior to adjournment, at the end of the meeting, residents will be offered another opportunity to pose questions on items that pertain to the school district. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions or comments if appropriate, but will often instruct the superintendent, the business administrator, or the solicitor to do further research and report back to the board or the resident. If you have specific questions, the board will try its best to respond either at the end of the meeting or shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding, so if your questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect rights to privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees, or students in a public session. Once again, at this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium. Okay. Administration, recommendation to approve the minutes of May 12th and 19th, 2021. Board meeting.
I know.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Tax parcel purchases. Recommendation to approve the following parcels exonerating all prior taxes up to the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year. Craig Dawswell to purchase 112 Locust Street in the bid amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Steve Hayes to purchase 143 Carroll Street in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars. Ann Israel and Kalani Smith to purchase 320 Todd Street in the bid amount of two thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. David Jones to purchase 1113 Sheffield Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Rashad McCalvi and Denaya Saltis to purchase 22, 220, 221, I apologize, Third Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand four hundred and two dollars. Signature LLC to purchase 1043 Main Street in the bid amount of one thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars. Robin Walker to purchase 1121 Main Street in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars. The Alacopa Economic Development Corporation to purchase 1112 Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars. 1116 Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars. 1120 Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars. 1156 Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and twelve hundred Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. 1220 Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and twelve twenty-four Franklin Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. Panama Property Management LLC to purchase 411 Sixth Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars. Sheila Anderson to purchase 1264 Sharon Street in the bid amount of one thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. Bruce Lindsey to purchase 310 Return Street in the bid amount of one thousand six, I'm sorry, one thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars. And Candace Washington to purchase 307 Fifth Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars. And 309 Fifth Avenue in the bid amount of one thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars.
I don't know. Mrs. Kane?
Any questions on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Assessment appeal. Assessment appeal. Recommendation to approve the settlement of an assessment appeal filed by Verlin C.L.A. at Beaver County number eleven three five seven of two twenty twenty regarding the group home located at two, two thousand seven hundred sixty-eight Broadhead Road. For the property to remain tax exempt for four years with the payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of twenty-five percent each year.
I'll second.
Who seconded? Did you second?
No, I didn't know who Luke.
Tina seconded.
I did second.
Any questions on the motion?
Uh, they're already in the house.
Yes, 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 it's been occupied at least for the last four years, that's correct.
So they want, they want four more years of, uh, tax exempt?
Correct.
Um, Mr. Salapac, can you explain this, please?
This?
Yes.
The Verlin Company, I, it's my understanding, has group homes throughout the county uh, where they provide uh, live-in services uh, and, and residence for uh, folks with special needs. And under the uh, under the charitable organizations law and tax exempt laws, uh, providing that sort of service allows a parcel, piece of property to be tax exempt. Mostly because uh, the entity providing that service is in replacement of other governmental groups that would do the same thing. You used to have, we still do have Friendship Bridge, it's now a public uh, or owned privately, but for example, Friendship Bridge, when it was owned by the county, it was tax exempt. And now that it is owned by a public entity or a, you know, private entity, uh, it is still tax exempt. The county, normally when there's a uh, tax exempt request, they negotiate a twenty-five percent payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, that is consistent with this parcel. Uh, again, this parcel has been tax exempt for the last four years. The prior agreement said it, it would only be so for four years. This agreement extends it for another four years. And as I, I indicated in the email to you, instead of collecting two thousand five hundred a year taxes on this parcel, the payment in lieu of taxes will be about six hundred and fifty dollars a year. So you are getting something towards your taxes. And the, the numbers that I just mentioned are only the school taxes. They still have to pay twenty-five percent of the county and twenty-five percent of the city.
Any other que, any other questions?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Memorandum of understanding. Recommendation to approve a memorandum of understanding with the City of Alacopa Police Department as required by the Safe Schools Act. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? PSBA All Access Package. Recommendation to approve the PSBA All Access Package for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year at six thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and forty-four cents. This cost remains the same as last year. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Solicitor. Recommendation to approve the law form of Dodaro, Mata, and Cambas as the solicitors for the Alacopa School District effective July one, twenty twenty-one through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. There will be five hundred, there will be a five hundred dollar monthly retainer fee and a one hundred twenty-five dollar hourly rate.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
I have a question. When we had a list for a solicitor, I'd asked if we were able to post that we need a solicitor. And you said that we have a recommendation. Where did this recommendation come from? Cause we just, we haven't received any information outside of this tonight, like we know nothing about this person.
Okay, and some of us do because we have been having meetings, some of you have not been able to attend those meetings. And so that is why this, where this information gets lost.
But we're just receiving the information, how could I make an informed vote on a key role in our district and if I'm just receiving the information?
Again, that information was definitely there and it was for all of, for all of us to review, but we weren't able to make these meetings. And at this point, we need a solicitor.
But why wasn't it sent out with our packages, with our agenda and stuff, like we're, we're just receiving this information?
I understand.
Are they even present, like do?
Can we call a small executive session to discuss it because we're gonna have to vote because we're gonna need a solicitor by July? So all the questions that we have, can we call a small executive session and have a conversation?
Actually, we can actually um, move to an executive, Mr. Salapac, can we move to an executive session?
Well, actually, the appointment of a solicitor is not an executive session, I think.
Yeah, okay.
It's not an employee.
Can I ask who made the recommendation?
I, I did, I did.
So were we not supposed to advertise or anything?
So in our handbook, it said that we can appoint a solicitor, but to add to that, we all knew that we did not renew Mr. Salapac and we knew we needed a solicitor. Nobody acted on it.
But I did ask if we could advertise.
It was, it was in the uh, Beaver County Times, and one firm has showed interest.
Was this the firm that showed interest?
Who was the firm that showed interest?
Tucker Arnsberg.
Were they contacted about it?
No, I, when I spoke with Mrs. Stewart on Friday, she said this firm should go on the agenda.
Any other questions on the motion?
Um, are they with any local schools?
So that information is in that package.
And for the record, uh, like she said, we have been meeting. This information has come from her, um, every time she get information, she does share it with us and um, tonight she just set up, I guess, put everything in a package, but everything's in here that we know about this firm. So again, um, if you missed the meeting, then you don't know, and.
What meeting was it discussing? Cause I haven't missed any of our meetings.
Yeah, you don't come on Tuesdays or Thursdays.
Those aren't to discuss our working floor, that's your sessions with Mr. Hauser for the board.
In addition to that, you have missed meetings. You have, you have been asked to be contacted via, you have missed meetings.
Any meetings that I have not made, I have asked to be called because I could not attend. I have not received any calls to attend. But this should have came in our package. Why was this not in with our board package? This isn't something that should have been discussed in a committee, I mean, we all should have been informed this as far as solicitor.
And I believe it was an executive session that, that was brought up.
What executive?
This past, this was the second session, um, this past week. We had a.
Yesterday? The executive session yesterday?
Yesterday. She called it executive session.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, before yesterday, we had one last week.
Right after the meeting.
Was that?
It was right after the meeting last week. Any executives here?
Well, if I was to discuss the last one, it's after the meeting, but we have to discuss it. Oh, it has been coming up, I put it out there.
So John, do we just, could we just?
I'm just saying, this is the first I've seen or even heard this name anything.
Exactly.
He said it came up, it's, it's not an executive session.
We call for the vote.
Okay.
Roll call. Ms. Gill?
Yeah, um, yeah, yes.
Mrs. Bible?
No.
Mrs. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
No.
Miss Calolala?
I, I'm sorry, I do have another question that I can ask.
So we're now voting?
We're voting.
We're now voting.
What is the price difference?
There is no price difference, it's exactly the same.
Okay. I'm gonna vote now.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Finance. Okay, April financial reports. Recommendation to approve the following reports for April twenty twenty-one. Treasury report, report of taxes collected, report of delinquent property tax collections, general fund financial statements, cafeteria fund financial statements. Attachments are, I guess, uh.
I know.
Any questions on the motion?
I have one. No, it may operate, it may be do better on the dispersments.
You second Mrs. Price.
Me and mine both had a thing. Who did you have as the motion?
Mr. Lo, motion. Mrs. Price Jeans, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May financial reports. Recommendation to approve the following reports for May twenty twenty-one. Treasury report, report of taxes collected, report of delinquent property tax collections, general fund financial statements, and cafeteria fund financial statements.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dispersments. Recommendation to approve general fund dispersments in the amount of six hundred thirty-three thousand, six dollars and forty-two cents for June twenty twenty-one. General fund ratifications in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents for May twenty twenty-one. Cafeteria fund dispersments in the amount of six, sixty-four thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-six cents for June twenty twenty-one.
I know.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Uh, I think this is it. Uh, I need a, um, this, I don't know if this is the right time or, but did we get any answer to the other on the budget? And dispers, and that was in dispersment, I believe.
The other five hundred accounts?
No, it's two other items that was on there. And each one was over a million dollars. And we asked you to give us a report on what other is, because you, you can only say others, pencils, stamps, or something like, look, for over a million dollars, it has to have a name to it.
The packet that you got, not this past Friday, but the Friday before, has that information in. It has all the detail for that other account.
Well, I didn't get a packet because I think he delivered somewhere else because.
There was an address, there's been an address mix-up, so.
And I, and I had told him, and I gave her a packet of the week, I gave Delceen the.
We didn't vote on that because Debbie was on vacation, correct?
No, the April was the one that was taped.
It was tabled. Is that added back into here?
We didn't vote on that.
Is that in here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought I had a copy of it, I don't.
Yeah, I would like.
Which report is it?
The one, oh, this one.
It was, it was the April report.
That was actually April.
It was.
Okay, that was.
When is the April, yeah. And we did not vote on this, correct?
We just did a couple minutes ago.
Just now, that was part of it.
The April financial report.
So this is part, is this some, an addition or addendum to some of the ones you already had listed?
No, those are more detail of the things that are listed on the financials. You asked for detail, specific details, what was in our five hundred other account?
So the amounts that you have in administrative contents right here, in all of these other in the financial are not part of this, it's an addition to those?
Nope.
It is those?
Your April financial five hundreds account are detailed on that page, the amounts match.
Okay, so, but why would you put, if it's a report and this is the budget and this is a, uh, a report, why would you put it separate or list them as others when they have item names and numbers?
You asked for detailed information.
Right, we're supposed to know, that's why, because you had other. Other don't explain anything.
Other is what comes out of my accounting package. You asked for specific details, that's what I provided.
Exactly, but why are?
That's what I'm providing.
You know what, Debbie, okay. Cause you're not gonna answer it, I see.
It's not, okay. Just, well, you're not gonna be here, but you know.
Ain't no other for a million dollars.
You just can't put other when you're looking at a financial statement. Legally, you can't do that, so I don't know if it's legally, but you just can't, ethically, you can't do that. Because questions like this will arise.
Cause you got cafeteria, cafeteria, but then you got other cafeteria.
And I guess that's what.
So it gotta be additional for, because ask it to be detailed and don't put other because
you have the software and you know what you're doing with, you know, the main, the finances, so when you present it to other people, wait, I'm talking. But when you present it to other people, then you need to just break it down as to what it is to explain, so this wouldn't happen.
It's a PDE chart of accounts, that is the names on the accounts that prints out of the accounting package. You asked for further detail, I provided it. I'm sorry if it doesn't give you information that you wanted.
And, uh, no, it doesn't, because like I said, in these financials, each one of these, in the financial report, in the dispersment, you have monies being paid out, dispersed out. Okay, so if you have money for the cafeteria on this one, why would cafeteria be on here too?
Cafeteria is not on the information I just gave you.
That's, I'm, I'm just, that's an example.
So can we make sure that moving board, if, if other shows up on that report that's printed out, that we get the detailed information with the report?
And cafeteria is on here, on here. That's what it says, um, three one zero zero cafeteria.
Ms. Gill, I, I gave you my only copy, so I, I don't know what you're looking at, I don't.
It says cafeteria on here, eleven thousand dollars.
That's equipment that was purchased through the general fund for the cafeteria. Your five hundred accounts are your, are your charter schools, your purchased equipment, your outsourced placements, your core deployment placements, part postage, communications, student hotspots. That's why I listed all of it, so you could see, the eleven hundreds are regular instruction, the twelve hundreds are special education, thirteen hundreds vocational ed, twelve hundreds, I'm sorry, twenty-one hundreds are support services, that's how it's broken down in the financials. You wanted more information on what was in the five hundred accounts, so I broke it down for you. In the twenty-three hundred admin services, we paid three hundred and sixteen dollars to VCRC through the month of April. For the business office, we paid two hundred and eighty dollars in bonding insurance. Like, the accounting package does not give this detail, there's no, there's no possible way to pull it out of the accounting package other than to create this report. So it won't be tied the same exact way as what you're used to seeing, it will be different.
Okay, well, that's, well, um, so, I mean, like, still, that's what I'm saying. We don't. We don't know that, you're, okay, you paying for cafeteria out of this account, and then cafeteria out of this one. We paying, uh, for this cafeteria. Why isn't everything in the same... You know what I'm saying? Like, if, if you paying for cafeteria in here, why isn't this listed with cafeteria in here? That's all I was asking.
Essers money came through the general fund. Essers money was used to buy, used to buy, um, the breakfast carts, and the carts that deliver the lunches, uh, in elementary school. That's why it's listed on here.
And we have a list of that also?
I'm sorry?
We have that list also?
It's, well, that's what the, it says cafeteria fund, but I'm telling you, that's an equipment purchase.
But that's what I'm saying, it has to be like a breakdown, because see, you...
Is this, that's the new money we just got in?
Like, you know, so it doesn't, you know, that's the Essers fund, and where's it coming from. And I guess the understanding is, where's it coming from, like the amount, that's like the breakdown.
When did we approve the purchases for those carts?
By summer.
It was like at the beginning of the year, right?
By summer, fall.
Right, okay.
So, that was the money that was used for the first amount that came in?
This is all, uh, this is Essers one money, yes.
But we just getting a report on it?
No, you're getting...
In April.
No. This was in that report prior to April, when I give you April, it just runs through the last day of the month of April. When I give you May, the totals change to include the month of May, and they run through the last day of May. It's a continuous total, it keeps increasing every month.
So, now you understand why we are asking, it should not be put as other?
Again...
Because we don't know what, the money just coming out, before we ask for this report.
Again, it's a PDE chart of accounts. You asked me for more detail, I tried to provide that to you. I can, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that it wasn't, it's not listed for you to, how you can understand it, I don't know how to change it, I can't change it in the system.
I don't want you to change, I just want you to put the, what it is, and let us know what it is.
Well, I've done that. We're...
Really?
Sorry, aren't we giving from PSBA, when we went through the training, like, a list of the chart of accounts, like, what the accounting codes and stuff were? Yes, the chart of accounts. Do we have a list of that, that we can get out to all the board members? It's a couple hundred pages, but yes, I would be happy to send it. Can we, like... Just, just a list. Can I maybe email it in a PDF or something? I think I've done that.
I think so.
I have done that, I, I emailed the three hundred page PDF to everybody.
Yeah, but can't you just make a list of what the codes are, and what they pertain to? Do, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. That would be about fifty pages of the chart of accounts that we...
Fifty pages, just let us know.
I can do that.
You're supposed to let us know, regardless if it's a thousand.
And I asked that before, and you said it was a lot of work, it was just too much work, and you have so much work to do, but you getting paid to do that work, so we asked you to break it down, one minute, one minute. So, we asked you to break it down, so everyone can understand, because I asked you, what about the codes? And you said, again, too much work, you have too much to do, and you couldn't do it.
I work forty-five to fifty hours a week, I'm sorry.
You don't have to explain that.
No, I do.
And we get paid, so there you go.
And this is my last board meeting, and I will not sit here and be beat up.
You're not giving up.
I'm giving up.
Don't, don't take it personal.
We can't ask you about the money, come on.
This is a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Cala Lala?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
No.
Ms. Gill?
No.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Portnoy Law Associates.
Budget.
The one above that, yeah.
Please, just give it up. Okay, so, okay, so it is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Recommendation to approve the general fund budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, with revenues and expenses both equaling twenty-six million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Real estate taxes, two sixty-one point five mils on land, which is three point five mil increase, and forty-one point five mil on buildings, which is one mil increase. Five dollar, five dollars for capital tax, one oh four occupational privilege tax, point fifty percent wage tax, point fifty percent mill wholesale tax, point seventy-five percent mill retail mercantile tax, and point fifty percent relative transfer tax.
I move.
No, so help me to understand, is, wait, 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 oh, we never did, second.
I'll second.
Okay, now, two questions.
Questions on the motion?
Yes, so if, is the same, there's gonna be an increase? And I'm working this the plan, so is it an increase?
There is a tax increase included in here, and with the, the three and a half mils and the one mil, it puts you... It puts like seventy-four thousand dollars towards your fund balance, without a tax increase, you, you are running another negative, and you can't do that to balance. So, I've cut expenses and gone through everything, I don't, I don't know where else to get money from, to make it, to make it balance, but tax increase. I mean, we talked, I was trying to do it today, I don't know where else to find the money to get it, to balance. And I'm not sure how you don't increase taxes, if you're trying to make up for a deficit of fund balance. You have almost a million dollars in the red, that you're trying to bring to the positive, and in order to increase your revenue, you have to increase your taxes.
Is it possible, I mean, is it possible that maybe this year, that we don't raise taxes? Can we get away with not raising at all this year?
I mean, if you don't raise taxes, you need to cut at least fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars on your expense side, to get your budget to balance.
We can't shame nothing else.
I have gone through it with a fine tooth comb, um, I think that your charter schools were probably understated, I think they're actually gonna be higher than what I have on here. If you, because I base it on this year's numbers, if you get any type of increases, your numbers will increase. So, it's your decision. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, where, where would that put us, if we, if we decide not to raise taxes, how, how would that really hurt us, if we still have money coming in? Help me to understand that.
If you don't raise taxes, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars swing in revenue.
Fifteen?
Hundred, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars swing.
So, what you're saying is the balance, the budget won't balance?
The budget won't balance without an increase. You can cut your expense side, but I don't know, I don't know what you cut, I can't, I can't advise you what to cut, because I don't see the, I don't see a cut in there. I mean, I removed teachers from the first projection, to try to get your expenses down. I, I did add your, um, community block grant, both revenue and expense side, so that netted to zero, that's not affecting the overall outcome of this.
I'm just trying to squeeze this together. This has to be voted on tonight, correct? I want the playboy.
Your, your budget has to be passed by the end of June.
Don't be, don't end with June. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Roll call. Mrs. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Cala Lala?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
No.
Ms. Gill?
No.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
No.
Five, four.
Five, four. Was it there?
Yes.
Okay, number five. Portnoy Law Associates. Recommendation to approve the dynamic between the Alcoa School District and Portnoy Law Associates, to collect delinquent property taxes on behalf of the district. The addendum extends the prior agreement for a period of one year through and including April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move.
A second.
Any questions on the motion?
Say if we don't, if there's someone else in place to connect this topic.
Not right now, no.
It goes, it would, you would notify the city to transmit them to the Tax Claim Bureau of Beaver County.
So, this is just for one year?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Cala Lala?
Yeah.
What was it?
Yes.
Two yeses. Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
No.
Ms. Gill?
No.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
No.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, number six. Recommendation to approve the services agreement reinstated with the Army Group for the Mobile Group B, Flag Four Fifty-Seventy Administration Services, effective July first, twenty twenty-one, through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at a cost of one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars, and there is no increase.
I move.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Pete, can you just refresh me on this?
This is the, uh, retirement accounts for employees that have four or three Bs.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Cala Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, full service network. Motion to, I mean, sorry, recommendation to approve the agreement with the full service network, or five, for a five-year agreement, for a cloud-based phone system, effective July first, twenty twenty-one, through, through June twen, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The cost would be five hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per month, per year.
Move.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Yeah, you're getting all new equipment, like, all new phones and stuff?
Yes.
And that cost is included in the five ninety-nine a month?
Yes. Yeah, and there was, um, other quotes are there, that were asked for last week. They were provided to me, so...
Uh, what is this, please, um, additional writing in on this?
Let me just say it.
What's that?
Those were the other quotes.
My scribble went on there.
Yeah.
Those were the, um, if you could, if you could find that, we're just rounding to six hundred, so we'd be paying twelve hundred dollars a month for both units. So, but if you have those other quotes, that's what we'd be paying, so...
And we had these people before?
For me?
They're new?
Yeah, this is...
They're cheaper than the, what, what was one of the four?
Uh, it's a little bit more, but we're upgrading our phone system, because a lot of it is obsolete, and we have a hard time getting parts.
Oh, it's upgrades. All right.
You did just say we're going around there? Do I have to, what did you say?
When I said, when I was talking about the figure, I said I'm rounding to six hundred.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Cala Lala?
Yeah.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Education Technology. Recommendation to approve resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty-one, declaring an emergency pursuant to the school code, section five twenty-one, regarding COVID-nineteen pandemic, for the purpose of confirming required instructional dates and time.
Somebody's seconded, I don't remember.
You move.
T is second.
Okay. I made two, right, yeah.
Okay. Questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Dern Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Cala Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Low? And Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve Jared Lackavich and Charles Bratner, um, junior senior high professional employees to be a poultry science, poultry, I'm sorry, science summer original program instructors, Monday, June twenty, Thursday, August fifth, twenty twenty-one. The cost is six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, and will be paid from Essers.
I move.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
What are the, what are teachers? Is it a chicken farm?
Yeah, it's chicken farm, more or less, yes. They're, they're doing activities that are related around math and science. Uh, it's for...
But you, they're going to, they'll be here certain days, and then they're going to a farm.
They're in the classroom, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then they go to the farm on Thursday.
Um, so, did, did you get a, in the roll, I'm just gonna give you one?
Uh, Dr. Sheffield was supposed to start this week, emailed me, I think, yesterday, said he was still waiting for a final list, that's why it's being postponed until Monday, but the, the goal was to have twelve students.
What grade level?
Sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Is there a ten, how many students?
Twelve was the goal.
Any other questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Recommendation to approve a Miranda Understanding with the Dodge Health Power Up Program, effective October first, twenty twenty-one, through and including September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I move.
I'll second.
Questions on the motion?
Yes, can you explain that?
Yes, they go into elementary, uh, classrooms, and they do character lessons, and they also do, uh, nutritional activities and lessons with the students. They've been doing it for quite some time, I would say, at least eight or nine years.
Yeah. Is this just for elementary, you say, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Athletics. The motion to, uh, to approve football summer conditioning program, beginning Monday, June fifteenth, through Friday, August sixth, twenty twenty-one, had a total cost of three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars.
I move. Second.
Okay, any question? Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? All right, roll call.
Do you have a performance report? Or some officially?
No.
No roll call? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
Motion to approve the football coach and saddens for the twenty twenty-one season as listed.
I move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
These are roll calls.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, is this their budget or this just?
No, you're, these are the, this is the salary. If you approve them, this is what you're proven to pay. That's why I gave you that information. I asked you to look at that first. This is what you would be approving them to get paid for next season.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. This is aside from their budget. Am I correct?
I, I don't understand your question.
Don't they all have a budget, like, you know?
Yeah. This is their salary for coaching.
Right, okay.
But this is included in their budget.
Their salaries are part of them.
Yeah, their salaries are part of their budget.
Okay, so you gave me a spreadsheet, um.
And I have copies of it. You want me to give it to everybody else so they know what you're talking about?
Yeah, so they can see, because we just had a meeting and you gave me a spreadsheet and, um, the question that came up is, uh, the increase from two thousand to four thousand. Two thousand and four thousand. Is that what the spreadsheet? Is that what Brandon and decided or did Brandon Mike and the athletic committee decide? How, how did that?
I don't know.
Mike gave us suggestive figures and we discussed it in an athletic meeting. April, maybe, if I remember correctly.
So.
I added this year's, I added this year's, the twenty-one salaries. So you can see where it would go this year. You could see the increase from twenty to twenty-one.
Yeah, I mean, there was an increase, but.
So the last column should be twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'm sorry, yes. The last col, column is what you, yes, it should be twenty twenty-one. So this, this salary that's missing here that was, um, Marlon Devonshire, did you spread that salary amongst the other ones? Is that how that worked? I, I did not. There's an increase in this, in the overall football salaries by seventeen thousand dollars with Devonshire being removed.
Okay.
So, yes, the increases are higher and then Devonshire comes out.
Do these fall in line with, um, whatever's in the, our agreement or whatever?
They're not in the agreement anymore. There's recommended starting salaries in the ADA agreement.
Okay.
Um, and then you guys have always left it up to your head coach for your assistants.
For the, how were the increases determined? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know.
I don't have that with me. I could share it with you. I don't have that with me, though. Mi, Mike, Coach Orfield did that. His, his recommendations.
So he's, so, um, Marlon Devonshire resigned and he has three new coaches added and then the other ones, you can see looking in those two columns, the increases. He's getting an increase. And I apologize, the last column should say twenty twenty-one.
So these increases, the coach can just request it, say he wants an increase, like nobody's appeared. Look, I don't understand how that, those increases work the term.
We, we talked about it in athletics meeting.
And your second page is county salaries comparing, comparing your, your Alamo school salaries for football coaching to your county salaries and all your other county schools. Western Beaver, Freedom, Beaver Falls. Just so you get an idea of where you are.
So, just a quick question, like, are other coaches getting increases too?
Not all of them, but some of them.
All the head coaches are, correct.
I don't think they have an increase in there for track. Didn't have an increase for softball.
But this year.
They're brand new.
But our existing coaches that.
Correct.
Our existing coaches, not the new coaches, are they getting increases?
I believe so, yes. I believe. I honestly don't think, I don't know that there was an increase for, uh, track. I don't recall an increase.
No, you didn't.
Not this past year. This past year there was.
No, but in my budget, I don't, I don't have an increase in track.
No.
I have an increase in volleyball. There's an increase in basketball and in football. But I don't recall, I don't recall, but there was no increase given to me for track.
I think the one question you had, s- some of the assistants' salaries stayed the same. He did not increase those. But if you look at the chart, some of them made a certain figure. Last season, he kept them at the same figure. This year also.
We also have three new coaches added on.
Yes.
Really, two additional bodies because one did resign. So it, it's two new, two more in total, yes.
Well, I mean, those three equal out to what that one body was as far as the salary is, is about the same. But all the other ones that have been here, there's an increase. So we're looking at a five thousand five hundred dollar increase from last year's salary.
I have a question. Why is it track getting, um, salary increase?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, this is what I was given, I, whatever I was given for the sports is what I put in. And that's, and I based it on last year, so if I wasn't given anything to increase, it may stay the same.
So you would have to get it from the track coach? No.
No, I would have to get it from Brandon.
From Brandon. We need to talk to Brandon, we need to talk to him, because I think track, I mean, they perform very well. So they need to have an increase.
I'm not, I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
That'd be nice. If we're increasing, we need to increase across the board.
Thank you.
I, I agree with that also. I, um.
Can we do that? Can we do that now?
No.
You mean the track? You could do that whenever we approve the salaries in next winter. That's, that, that would be the time to do that.
So they, they already got paid?
No.
For this season?
No. Oh, track got paid for twenty-one, yes. His increase, these increases are twenty-one, twenty-two.
And then they, in the spring, I'm sorry, the winter, we approved.
Track, for tracks, yes.
Offspring sports get approved in February.
I do have a question regarding the pays, though.
Yes.
Is it true that, like, the fall sports have to wait until football is completely done before they get paid?
All the sports are paid together according to the contract.
Why would it be written that way if, if one is completed prior to the, the football season? Why do they have to wait until the end of December to get paid?
They get paid in October. October twenty-fifth, correct?
They either got paid October twenty-fifth or November tenth. I can't.
But they don't get paid until after playoffs and everything, football goes to playoffs, so.
No, they get.
That's not true. They get paid and then they get paid additional money for playoffs after the playoffs are over.
I'm not talking about football. I'm talking about the other sports. Are they told to wait until football season is over to get their pay?
I think that I do pay all, all the seasonal sports get paid at the same time, yes. So all fall sports get paid at the same time. It's just an account, it's just a record keeping thing.
What, what, what are you asking? What fall sports are you referring?
I'm just asking because I was told that, like, um, volleyball. Whatever the other fall sports are, if football is extended out, they have to wait until football's done to receive their pay, even if they were done the month prior.
Football, when, when the regular football, um, season is over, all of the fall coaches are paid. When they, even if they're in playoffs, because then they get their playoff pay. But their regular season pay goes before their playoffs are done.
But that would include junior high basketball and volleyball?
Yes.
They, they wait until they end the football?
Right. So football's over in October. So they either got paid October twenty-fifth or November tenth. Off the top of my head, I can't remember which one.
So if their season ends in October and football doesn't end until November, they have to wait until November to get paid?
Well, does the regular season end in October?
Yes.
Yes. So they all end in October. It's just, it, so they're paid the regular season and then when they go into playoffs, they get playoff pay that's additional.
But we're not holding up the other sports.
Not because of playoff pay, absolutely not.
Okay, thanks. So volleyball?
Yes.
When does volleyball get paid?
When, in October.
When the season is over.
When football season's over. That's the last fall sport. When football season's over, all of those, junior high basketball, volleyball, and football all get paid on the same payroll run.
But I thought we agreed that we're not gonna hold their money up when the season is over, they get paid the following month. Why are we holding volleyball money up, basketball money up? Because football's running tall, local. I don't think that's fair. I thought we talked.
Well, when does volleyball end? Volleyball doesn't end until the beginning of October.
You have junior high volleyball, you have junior high football.
Junior high volleyball is the spring. They're played, they're paid, she's paid about her spring.
Basketball, basketball. So the spring basketball starts in the fall when school starts.
But they go into October, too.
You know, so whenever they go.
I would say first or second week of October.
If they're done in October, the first, second week is October and the payroll goes in for the twenty-fifth, one, they get paid on the twenty-fifth. Why are you making them wait until November, December? We, we said years ago that once the season goes, we used to, no, y'all used to make them wait until June and everybody get paid. And then we said, no, why would they have to wait? Why not pay them at the end of their season? When your season is over, that's when you get paid. That is not happening.
I mean, it is happening. They're all paid together, though. Those fall sports run within a week or so of each other ending and then they're all paid on the same payroll run. Winter sports run consecutively and end within a week of each other and then they get paid. Same with spring sports. I mean, track got paid when baseball and softball did, even though he went to state. He got his regular pay when baseball and softball got paid.
The season was over?
Exactly.
In May, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's right. He got paid in the sixth. You did that right, that's right.
Yes.
Softball was like a week from baseball and then track, so all three of them.
For record keeping purposes, because they end so close together, it's easier and more efficient to pay them all on the same payroll. Then there's no, you're not missing anybody, you're not overpaying anybody. It's a, it's a procedure. Everybody goes the same pay three times a year. Fall sports, winter sports, spring sports.
Any other questions or comments? This is a roll call.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalalala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darn Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Um, I have a question. Should I abstain because my brother's on it?
No.
I'm good, okay.
Okay, volleyball coach. Recommendation to approve Karma Jackson as the head volleyball coach for a contract in three years, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, through and including November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at a salary of forty-two hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-one season.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, I, yeah, I had, I had, um, the, um, previous thing, it was just four thousand, so it's a two hundred dollars.
There was a, we reviewed it and seen the budget, it was forty-two hundred.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalalala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darn Flanagan? Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve Shaquela Hardy as the assistant volleyball coach at a salary of two thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-one season.
I'll second. Any questions on the motion?
Roll call.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalalala?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darn Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve the basketball coaches' salaries for the twenty twenty-one season as listed on the agenda.
I'll move. Second. Move.
Mrs. Bible?
Second.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Any questions on the motion?
Yes. So, Pete, you had mentioned a long time ago that, um, for the ninth, the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade coaches of having assistants.
They're.
So would they be volunteer?
No. There's, um, still a seventh grade coach, boys, that needs to be named. We haven't got that name yet. Because last year, there was one coach for just seventh and eighth grade. We decided there, there should be two there, one for eighth grade, one for seventh grade. Yes.
Will they help each other out?
They can.
Okay. What about ninth? We're just having one coach?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we putting a salary for that?
It would be fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred?
Whenever we know that person.
What's that?
Whenever we know that person, it'll be on the agenda.
Okay, so we, we need a seventh grade one, not a.
Seventh grade.
Roll call.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalalala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darn Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve the following resignations for retirement purposes as listed. Can I say it?
Yes.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. You said aye.
This or your motion? Mr. Sullivan, the next motion, uh, Mrs. Engelmann, her resignation effective June eighteenth, but we would like to keep her on at sixty, fifty dollars an hour.
I can't hear.
One second, to, to continue assisting the district.
For what?
On an ask. Want an ask needed basically.
For how many hours?
Let's just do, like, a certain.
Just for her to complete the budget or till we find some whole payroll budget?
You can do it at the hourly rate, and I'll keep track of them during the first week, you can see how many hours it needs to be adjusted, we can adjust it. Wait, I'm not gonna kill you. I'm not, I'm not, that's not the purpose. Just do the, okay.
Mrs.
Make it, this, this needs to be two separate motions.
Okay, alright.
You have the re, you have the resignation, and if you wanna make a separate motion, which would be similar to what we, a similar motion to this lady that we had the payroll for.
That's correct.
To, uh, to retain, so let's, let's do the first motion.
No, go ahead, read it.
Recommendation to approve the resignation of Mrs. Debbie Engelmann, Business Administrator, Board Treasurer, effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. I move.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, we're gonna, it's, Mrs. Price Jean's, we're gonna insert another motion right here?
Yeah.
Alright, so recommendation to approve Mrs. Engelmann.
To, well, to provide accounting services at a rate of fifty dollars per hour?
Yes.
For how many hours? How long does it take you, Debbie, to do, they want?
At a rate of? Well, I know. I'm only, I'm approving payroll, but I'm also doing your financials, approving your check runs, um, and I'm doing your uploads to P E, P D E. Um, so it's not just payroll. So, you know, payroll, one to three hours every pay, it takes to approve.
So you said those additional things. So how long does it take you for total? Is that the three hours, one to three hours for all of that?
Absolutely more than three hours, yes. I don't, I don't know. I can't give you a good estimate. I don't know. Um, you wanna tell me ten hours, I'll stop at ten hours, and I'll get approval before I go, but I'm there. I, I have, I don't, whatever.
What was my, yes, you can give it ten hours or more?
I said, you wanna put a limited ten hours a week or whatever on it, go ahead and do that, and then if I need to go more, I'll stop, and I'll get approval before I go more.
You think it'd be more than ten hours?
Some weeks it might be. Like, financial weeks, when I have to do your financial packet to get it ready for your board meeting, it's gonna be more than ten hours, yes.
I have a question. What? She's gonna do everything she did. What are we doing about a business administrator?
We're still interviewing and whatnot?
Well, we, I shared the email with the information regarding the one, and I have contacted PASBO, but I have not received any names of interest from PASBO yet.
For the temporary?
Yes.
So, are we re-advertising?
I can, but I don't know if it'll be any different.
I can put it back up on my PASBO, on my PASBO site again. I'll put it back up.
I can re-advertise it. She mentioned P A Educator.
Can we, can we, the role signs that?
I'd have to see what the, what the subscription cost is.
I don't know. Peo, more people use PASBO now than P A Educator. Like, I have found that not many people are posting on P A Educator. But that PASBO, I believe that's where you got all of your, uh, but three people that you interviewed, you got on PASBO.
It was on there, PASA, uh, Tri-State, you put it in Post Gazette, you put it in the Times.
Right.
Other than P A Educator, it's everywhere else.
The, the two people that were qualified got it off of PASBO.
Can we post her on like a dial board, like Indeed or something?
Doesn't, it goes off of there, does?
I can try.
I think if I post on PASBO, it falls to Indeed.
I don't know.
I think so, but I'll find out.
Is it also another chance?
It probably should've been. It's probably drawn now, but when I posted, it shouldn't. Okay. So, Mrs., you want me to just read it?
You sure can.
Okay. Recommendation to approve Mrs. Debbie Engelmann to provide accounting services at fifty dollars per hour for ten hours a week.
I'll second. Any other questions on the motion? Mrs. Engelmann?
Yes.
All right, roll call.
How's the number in this? F two B?
I'll, I'll have to fix it tomorrow.
Cause we, I'm good.
I can't do it on this.
I'll do, um, so we didn't do the, a roll call for her.
Resignation, no, we have to do resignation, or we have to do a roll call on this one.
Yes, alright. Who's second is, is?
Mrs. Calala.
Alright, I have to just do it. Alright, Ms. Calala.
Oh, yeah.
Mrs. Kane? Mrs. Kane?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Darren Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yeah.
Recommendation to approve the resignation of Mr. Mark Zino, um, junior senior high school professional employee, effective August tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Why is he resigned? Mr. Zino, he obviously got hired in Colorado, but he wasn't gonna let her go. Oh, so he's moved out. So, he's, he's actually already there, he left last Monday. Oh, I'm curious.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What do we do?
He put, he put August tenth because that's the last pay of this school year. So even the ones that resigned and, uh, retired, effective June whatever, their last pay is August tenth. That's why he put August tenth on there.
Question. Father's resignation, are we preparing to replace, or?
Yes.
Be ready for school. Sorry, Tate.
Recommendation to approve the resignation of Dr. James Tatum as the school district doctor, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Second.
Questions on the motion?
If you read his letter, just. I don't wanna say it, I'll write it. Let me just see. I can read it. Me, too.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Recommendation to approve Dr. Daniel Cristo as the Alupuca School District Access Doctor, July first, twenty twenty-one, through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at the cost of two hundred dollars for ten months, two thousand dollars per year. Second.
Questions on the motion?
So, is he being paid for his payment?
No. This is, this is special education.
Alright, roll call.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darren Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Calala?
Yes.
Mrs. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Recommendation to approve the payments for the following twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one sponsors as listed below.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Um, yes. Um, we got a list from twenty twenty, two thousand fourteen, two thousand eighteen. Two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen. Now, the problem with this is, uh, this hasn't been followed. So my question is, where do we get these amounts from, and then when do we follow? Cause if you compare, uh, twenty, twenty oh nine, twenty fourteen, and then it goes from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, and then twenty-eight to twenty twenty-four, there is no, uh, I don't say who updated, it don't say.
The current contract is what we used for these figures.
But the contract wasn't done, and then two thousand and eighteen.
There may have been a mistake, then.
Because it's, it's different. And some of them are right, and some of them are wrong. Um, some, they just put whatever they want in there, and the others, they just didn't look at this list at all. So, um, I don't know.
Are things in the teacher's contract?
Pardon me?
Are things in the teacher's contract?
Yes. Yeah, I, the, the current contract, that's where I got these figures.
Okay, so why are they being followed? They were in a contract from two thousand nine, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. Why weren't these?
When did we update the con, when did we renew the contract? Was it sixteen?
It was fall of, fall of eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay, so even that, that's why you didn't update it before the six. Like I said, some of them are right, so I mean, if you're gonna do this, we have to look at this before we bring it out.
Yes, as far as I noticed.
If this is what the teacher's contract said, that's what we should be going by. But it seemed like they're just putting what they want here.
Yeah, like I said, if there was a mistake, and if, if there was a wrong figure in the past, it was a mistake.
It was a wrong figure.
I said, if there was, then it was a mistake, but these ones are, for this year coincide with the existing contract.
Okay, but the mistake in the past has to be corrected.
I mean, can you give me an example? It doesn't look to me like this was off.
Okay, uh, where are we at? Nina Hill.
Turn the heat on.
She has, um, six, six, six twenty-five. And she came and said, we shorted her in two thousand and fifteen, and then they gave her seven fifty. But then you want three to share twelve hundred dollars. On this paper, it says, any club member that has two or more people except class sponsor will split the money based on the highest number of years served by one of the participants. So if you say twelve hundred, it doesn't add up. Then you have, uh, the Vets, Majorettes, and Color Guard.
And who, there was only one sponsor for that this year?
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I mean, you have it, but all three of them are one. And then you have twelve hundred dollars. So at that time, when you had all three of them, they only got four hundred dollars. Is that right?
Yes. But I think it was always broke between two.
Uh, now it is, but it wasn't then.
As far, one, as far back as I went, it was only broke between two. Like I talked, spoke with you this morning, as far back as I went, it was broke between two.
Well, it was three at one time, and then it just went to two because, uh, one, the other sponsor, uh, didn't come back, so they put the, put Vets and the Color Guards together. And it's the second year that they put them together. In two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, you gave Mina seven hundred and fifty dollars. They saw your six hundred and twenty-five dollars. They did not split the twelve hundred dollars that you had.
What year was that?
Last year. The two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
I thought that, I thought that the Quipettes and the Color Guards were always together, they just split the pay, cause Anita Gordon was doing it, and then, um, somebody else was doing the other.
That's correct.
And they would split the pay. There was just two of them.
They're not splitting, is what I'm saying, cause Mina has five years. So she's bumped up to the next category, which is twelve fifty.
But Mina's was always separate.
No, it's not.
Majorettes? I thought Majorettes were separate from.
They are separate. Majorettes are separate, but then the pay was not separate, is what I'm saying. And she came to us since two thousand and fifteen and saying, why am I being, you know, given this money? And now that they bring this new one here, two thousand eighteen to two thousand and twenty-four, now it's true.
It was Mina, it was Mina and Anita, it was split between.
Yeah, they each got six twenty-five.
They both, it, it got split between Anita and Mina. And Sissy was actually an assistant, I think, at the time, or whatever, now she's the sponsor, right? She didn't get anything, cause she was a volunteer, unless they paid her out there.
Well, could, could've been. But if we're going to use this, we have to go by this. We just cannot figure out what amount we wanna put on here, because there's some other ones on here that are wrong, and we're cheating these people out of their money. So what I'm saying, moving forward, let's check this list, and this is what we're gonna pay them. Let's check this list, and let's pay these people. These people are hard for their money. That's all I'm saying. Let's look at this list, cause you got, you got one person that made five hundred dollars last year, year full, like. This year, they're making twenty-five hundred. First time coming in. One to four years.
Wait a minute. Last year, that position was split between two people. That's why.
It's not on here, sweetheart.
Yes, it is. The sheet I gave you, absolutely on there.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah, because y'all cheated him out of his money then. You didn't split it between the two. You just gave one two thousand.
We sat down with Mr. Burnett in the union, and we discussed that, that two thousand and five hundred dollars. I do remember that.
Cause it was time served.
This year, there was only the one assistant. If you look at the chart, it's twenty-five.
Okay, right, but what I'm saying, if you're gonna, if you're gonna split between the two band directors, we did not need three. We had a band director and two assistant band directors. So like I, like I told you before, we never approved him, but you still can't show me where he came in and we approved him. He came in as a music teacher, not as a marching band director, but he was split on there. That's all I'm saying. So this is why Darren is on here, because he said that his money was taken and was given to someone, which it was. And we brought that up before, but they spent a few years, and here we are again with these other ones. So all I'm saying, now I see you got a new list here, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. This is gonna be the current list. This is what we need to be going by. So I'm saying.
The item, the totals on your agenda match the contract that expires in twenty twenty-four.
Now it does.
I do have a quick question. So, since Mr. Zino resigned, and he's listed as a class sponsor, should we change that to be determined?
You're, aren't you?
No, that's.
You're proving pain in for last year.
He was junior class sponsor, yeah, this is for last year.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call. Mrs. Darren Flanagan? Mrs. Cora? Mrs. Darren Flanagan, ready?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna pass, Stephanie. Wait, you're welcome. Yes.
She said, uh.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Answered. I answered.
Okay.
I'll say yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Calala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, recommendation to approve Ms. Paige Casella, junior senior high school professional employee, effective August tenth, twenty twenty-one. I move.
You're second.
I'll second. Any questions on the motion?
What, what is her position as a professional employee?
She was our Spanish teacher, she is moving to Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Spanish teacher. Great.
We just posted for her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, recommendation to approve the resignation of Mr. Louis Chicorelli, Chicorelli?
Chicorelli.
Chicorelli, yeah. Junior senior high school professional employee, effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Come on, Chic.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chicorelli has accepted the assistant principal position at Hopewell Junior High School.
Mr. Gill. For him, he's been trying for a long time.
Oh, junior high.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation to approve private industry.
Why does this say it's July thirtieth?
That's what he put on his letter. Just combined the date he put on his letter.
It really doesn't matter when your teachers date their resignations. I think he did that so he could start at Hopewell on August first, but his last check from me will be August tenth.
Okay.
Ready? Recommendation to approve Private Industry Council to provide summer programming for two weeks, July twelfth and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The program would be held Monday through Thursday, nine AM to one PM. I move.
A second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's nothing to report on capital projects, policy, information, community engagement?
I won here. Okay, um, community engage. Okay. I'm gonna be meeting with, um, or getting in contact with Renee Buffalini, so we can get a, um, she's talking about a parent program. And as I was coming in, I met a few great parents here who would be interested on, um, being on the engagement board or meeting with the engagement, as Ms., um, Linda, the president of the PTO, um, Becky Washington, the vice president? And Ms. Anderson. She's, well, she's a concerned parent, grandmother, and parent, and community representative. And, um, we are in the process now, we're trying to get a program going with parents. And Mr. Carbo, I mean, Dr. Carbo. Is there any way I can get in contact with some of these, um, the, I see on the, the class of twenty-two? Um, twenty twenty-two? Um, Ashley Fur and Mark Zeno, Zeno?
He moved.
He moved.
I can see who the upcoming class sponsors are.
Yes, I can get their.